Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education, September 12th, 2024. Can we please rise for the pledge? Thank you and welcome to everybody that's here tonight. Lots of new staff members, lots of faces. It's always very exciting this time of the year. So, thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. Item number three, standing approval items, 3.1, acceptance of agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? Seeing none, agenda is approved as presented. Item 3.2, approval of minutes. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mr. Chahorsky?
The Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes: August 1st, 2024, special minutes of finance and facilities; August 8th, 2024, special minutes, TMP presentation; and August 8th, 2024, the regular minutes.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Mrs. Cook? Can we have a roll call, please? Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
All vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, a person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place the card in the basket prior to the citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or their designee for review, study, and possible future response. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. I have Kathleen London?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen London. I live at 5132 Thorncroft Court. As you know, at about 10:30 PM, just three days into the new school year, I received an email from Royal Oak Schools on behalf of Principal Loomis at the high school. I had just returned home after picking up my son from the high school where he performed for the marching band during the first season's football game. The email parents received stated that a Royal Oak High School had been found in possession of a weapon as part of an arrest made by the Detroit Police Department related to an incident outside of Royal Oak. The next day, the Oakland Press news article identified the weapon as a firearm. First, I'm grateful that the Detroit Police Department, who was a very busy, a very busy agency that patrols 139 square miles to serve and protect the residents of more than 600,000 residents, found the outside incident of so much concern that they made it a priority to make this arrest. Further, I thank any of the, any school resource officer, Royal Oak police, or school administrators involved in facilitating the arrest. As parents and community members, though, we have been left to our imaginations to wonder about the severity of this outside incident that the student is suspected to have committed that warranted so much coordination and planning. I do, however, have questions. I support the right of the school to protect the privacy of the student considering they've been identified as a minor. Of course, we would know the student's name had the firearm been used and anyone had been hurt because it would have been splashed across the nation's news outlets as the latest addition to the too-long list of shootings at schools and school events, a truly American problem. So, I'm asking tonight for some follow-up information about the incident, and I'll be in contact with the board and administrators in the following weeks. Please note that none of these questions violate the privacy of the student nor ask you to reveal their identity. Why did the email the parents use the word "weapon" instead of "firearm"? What type of firearm was it? Was it discovered on the student or elsewhere on school grounds or in a school building? If it was discovered on the student, what actions will be taken to help ensure firearms or other weapons do not make it into football games or other activities in the future? If it was found on school grounds or in a building, what protocols are administrators taking to help prevent that in the future? Did Detroit Police suspect the student would be armed? Was that communicated to Royal Oak staff, and when? Per district policy, I assume the student will not be permitted to re-enter Royal Oak School at the very least. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for making the safety and security of our students a top priority.
Thank you. Laura Sayen?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Laura San, and I'm the mother of a newly-minted kindergartner at Keller Elementary and look forward to growing our husky family when our youngest joins his sister in three years. My family and I are transplants to the Royal Oak area and actively sought a home in this community so we could be a part of Royal Oak Public Schools. Excuse me. We are excited about this new chapter in our parenting journey, and I have few worries about the quality of education our children will receive. The worry I cannot quiet is one that so many caregivers to school-aged children share with me, one that sits in the back of our throats and deep in our guts every day we send our beautiful young people into schools where unequivocally they and all staff should feel safe but cannot wholly due to the ever-present potential for gun violence. I don't think I need to stand here and run through a litany of grim statistics tonight. We are all aware of what happened to our neighbors in Oxford, of the most recent shooting at Appalachia High School in Winter, Georgia, and the fact patterns leading up to those horrific events. We are all also familiar with the school-wide announcement we received after a student with a undisclosed weapon was arrested while on Royal Oak High School grounds, after the district-wide welcome-back event and inaugural football game just four days into the new school year. In the interest of taking reasonable, common-sense measures to protect our children and school staff, I am here tonight to implore the school board to consider taking an action that other districts across our country, and most notably, the Los Angeles Unified School District and Phoenix Union High School District have done. At the urging of brave and avid gun safety advocates, these districts have created a multilingual parent guardian attestation form that is circulated at the start of every school year, which details state and local safe gun storage laws and related punishments for violating those laws. Parents or guardians are asked to sign the attestation form confirming they have received this information and return it to their child's school. I have the 2024-2025 form utilized by LA's Unified School District with me tonight as an example, and it is easily accessible online. In our state, as of February 13th of this year, Public Act 17 of 2023 requires individuals keep unattended weapons unloaded and locked with a locking device or stored in a locked box or container if there is reasonable knowledge that a minor is likely to be on the premises. If violated, individuals are punished under Public Act 16 of 2023 and can face up to 15 years in prison and a fine of up to $10,000 if a minor discharges a firearm and inflicts death on an individual or themselves. Our district has responded to the recent events in Georgia with clear communication about its commitment to providing gun violence prevention measures. I'm asking you to take these important practices a step further and consider instituting a similar attestation form that the other districts I mentioned have done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Werster?
I realize that this is going to sound like a broken record. I literally just wanted to speak on the same thing that occurred from the past two speakers. I, too, have a kindergartner. She's my oldest out of three. Her name is Leila, and she's over in Keller. And I, the kids in Alapachi were my child, essentially. And I know that we're doing everything that we can, and I did read the full email on what we are currently doing as far as with the local PD, making sure that response times are quick. Is there anything that we can do more? And that is just my question. Is there something new on the horizon that we can add into our system? I like attestation. I was unaware of that. Just, is there something that we can invest in that might even require a milage? I'm okay with that as well. I want my daughter to graduate high school. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, presentations and reports. 5.1, new staff introduction, Mr. Walensky?
Well, thank you, Ms. Van Heitzma. As you can see, we have quite a larger audience than we typically do. Tonight being the first board meeting, official board meeting of the school year, and has become tradition, we've invited our new staff, our newly hired staff, to join us this evening to be formally introduced to you. For the past four months, I've been talking about all the new people we hired, and it's just numbers, but as you can see, we really have been hiring new people, and this is not even all of them. So, it's a very busy time of year. Many of them couldn't make it. They had other obligations, but I'd like to, it's kind of interesting, I'd like to ask one of our new hires to come forward first to introduce his new hires, Don Loomis, principal of Royal Oak High School.
Thank you. So, we've got three people from Royal Oak High School. We've got Noah Shemansky? Come on up, Noah. Is that good? Stand by. You know what? I'm sorry. I just met you. Can you come up? I just met, he's, he's, he's had some surgery. I just met him today. And one more time on your name.
What's that, Ryan McQuain?
Ryan McQuain. Thank you so much. And Olive, will you come up as well? And then we have Olive McDonald as well. So, these are all from Royal Oak High School.
Okay, not, not exactly one of our new hires, but brand-new to her position, Angela Mallory. I'm going to ask Angie to come up and introduce the new hires for Royal Oak Middle School as Principal Kristen Meldrum was not able to be here this evening.
Good evenings. Good to see you all again. I'm Angela Mallory, one of the assistant principals at Royal Oak Middle School, and I am proud to represent our amazing ROMS community tonight. I am thrilled to introduce our incredible new teachers who are ready to make a very lasting impact at our school. Brittany Luoh joining us as our awesome new Spanish teacher. Thank you. Maya Coobie, our dedicated Level III teacher. I did not see Lindsey, is Lindsey Steinke, Lindsey Steinke, Miranda Miller, and Nick Zimmer are bringing their brilliant expertise to our math department. And last but certainly not least, Laura Durda. Laura was hired as an ELA teacher, but we are excited to recommend her for the assistant principal role. She has an extensive leadership background and was a top candidate during our, our recent AP interviews and will be filling the position left by Jason Hinchall, who has accepted an opportunity at Groves High School in Birmingham. We are incredibly excited for the future with such a dynamic team, and ROMS rocks. Thank you.
And also our new assistant principal.
Right.
Okay, I asked Danielle Truesdale, supervisor of our Early Childhood Center, to organize her colleagues and introduce them in order so I don't introduce them all at one time. So, I'll turn things over to Danielle Truesdale to introduce her staff.
Good evening, everyone. I had, we've had, we've hired quite a few people over at the Early Childhood Center. Some of us, some of them were able to make it, some not. I have Kelsey Morris is here. Kelsey Morris having our Early Childhood Special Education classroom, so our young students that are three to five with developmental disabilities. We have, let's see, Hannah Good. Hannah Good is here. Hello, Hannah Good. Hannah Good is a speech and language pathologist that is joining our early childhood team. In addition, she'll be working with students that are in the classrooms as well as our walk-in population. So, those are students that are walk, come into the building for speech services. I don't believe we have Anne Gladson, who is a physical therapist that was hired for our early intervention team, or Jean Campbell is not here either. She is a speech and language pathologist who is also part of our early intervention team. So, thank you. Next up is Dr. Parrott, principal of Oak Ridge Elementary.
Thank you. For the record, Mr. Walensky actually asked me to organize it. Then Danielle came around the door, or the corner and decided that she was a much better choice, so. I have four staff members here that I would like to introduce. The first is Heidi Mackel. Heidi comes to us from Michigan State, and this is her first-year teaching. Maria Elliott. Maria is our art teacher, and she is a proud parent of a ninth grader at Royal Oak High School. Grace Nasky. Grace is a paraprof one of our support classes, and she comes to us from Clausen. And Laura Glover. Laura is also a parent in one of our ASD classrooms. She has a third grader at Oak Ridge. She actually was one of our former lunch monitors, and she has the pleasure or displeasure of being my neighbor, depending on how you look. And that is our new staff from Oak Ridge Elementary. I have the pleasure of introducing Jason Taylor, who's principal of Oakland Elementary.
Thank you. I'm Jason Taylor. I'm the principal at Oakland Elementary. I have a few staff members here that I'd like to introduce. First, Maria Elliott, who's already been introduced, is also at Oakland for two quarter-days-ish a week, so we're proud to have her. And also Kylie Dieski is our new fourth-grade teacher. She graduated in 2022 from Oakland University, was a student teacher at Upton Elementary, and has taught in Warren Woods Christian School, third grade for the last couple of years. So, and also Drew Shaw is our new teacher. Is our new teacher of students with autism. He has spent the last three years working for the Autism Alliance in Southfield advocating for students, students with autism and their families. He has a master's degree in autism, students with autism spectrum disorder from Eastern Michigan, and he also has a bachelor's of science from Eastern Michigan for students with cognitive impairments. So, our new staff, oh, and last but not least, I think somebody else is going to introduce him a little bit more thoroughly. A.J. Miller is our, is one of our PE teachers at Oakland. I sort of forget about A.J. and Maria because they've really been teaching our specials classes for, you know, brilliant year now, so they're not really brand-new to us. So, this is our new staff at Oakland. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Tim Boyer from Adams Elementary to introduce his new staff.
This might surprise you, but I'm going to welcome up Maria Elliott, our art teacher. As Jason just said, she's been with us all through last year and a total fan favorite in our building at Adams, so we're super grateful to have her. Also, A.J. Miller. She does our PE courses. Both these teachers provide also our specials for our ASD self-contained rooms, which is an awesome program that we have for them. And I also like to welcome Kristin Rammold. There she is. This is one of our new ELD teachers. She works with us in Mali at Northwood, and super excited to have that extra support we're going to have to share for those students. So, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to welcome John Griswak up from Upton Elementary. Thank you, Tim. As a former Upton teacher that you were, it's glad to have you and that you remembered me. All right, I will also do our new staff here, and I'll, might as well bring up Maria and A.J. again. We're used to traveling to all the buildings, coming back and forth. This is pretty easy. So, Maria teaches our kindergarten classes, three classes of kindergarten of art, and Andrew teaches our DK physical education class. We also, my paraprofessionals aren't here, but they are Precious Pollard, Sabrina Stark, and Christina Pierce. And our school psychologist also is not here, but her name is Megan DeRue. And our ELD teacher is here, and her name is Miranda Gioni. And now I will introduce Molly Bascom Keller from, from Northwood.
Hello, and thank you for having us. We are super excited. This is probably the most fun time of the year for us. So, I've got several wonderful new Northwood Nighthawk staff members to introduce to you. The first one is Teresa Campbell, and she is one of our new paraprofessionals in our ASD room. And the name might sound familiar. I'm trying to think why. Let me think about that for a minute. So, Teresa grew up here in Royal Oak. She is a Royal Oak graduate. Her mom has taught her for years. She grew up across the street from Northwood, so we're super excited to have her at Northwood. So, welcome, we run out of sugar or creamer. We know exactly, exactly where to go. It's perfect. Our next person we're going to introduce is Alyssa Gonzalez, and she is also a new paraprofessional in our ASD classroom. So, this is our dynamic duo in that classroom. Also in that classroom who could not be here tonight is our brand-new teacher, Rebecca Spalding, who is our ASD teacher. She's amazing. You will meet her another time. Another wonderful new teacher we have is our new ELD teacher, and you met her a moment ago because we also share her with Adams, and that's Kristen Rammold. And our last staff member I want to introduce is Karen Cole, and she's our wonderful new paraprofessional who is assisting us with some medical needs for students, and we're thrilled to have her. Thanks so much.
Thank you, and I'm glad all of you were able to be here and welcome. We're looking forward to you joining our team, and you have joined our team. But thank you for the work you do every day, and thank you for choosing Royal Oak Schools. We appreciate it. Yeah, there's, Keller is not represented because there is nobody new at Keller, yes, or here tonight from Keller. So, moving on to item number 5.2, audit review. Mrs. Bella, sorry.
I'd like to welcome Jamie Rivette from Yo and Yo. She's our partner in charge of our, our job. I see Ms. Sutterfield's trying to get our screen up so that you can show your presentation. So, you're welcome to either table or stand, whatever you're comfortable.
Yeah, I'll sit right here, if that's okay. I thought maybe the audit drew the crowd, but I guess not.
I, I find your presentation riveting.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, go get her. I don't know. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is this working? Okay. Well, unfortunately, Mercy Dryden was not here tonight. We did not know our new employee from Keller Elementary would be, but I would be remiss if we didn't introduce Kristen. Also, I should clarify that Kristen is not new to Royal Oak Schools. She has worked in our Trails program as a paraprofessional for a number of years. She will be teaching elementary physical education for us. So, we're thrilled to have her.
All right. So, Jamie Rivette, thank you.
We'll boss some time, so now the presentation's up. So, I guess it's a win-win. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jamie Rivette. I'm the audit partner with Yo and Yo CPAs, and I had the pleasure of overseeing the audit. So, tonight we're going to go over the highlights. You should all have a copy in front of you of the PowerPoint, and I believe you are all emailed PDFs of the financial statements as well as the single audit. So, to go over the highlights, we'll first talk about the audit results. So, every school district in the state of Michigan is required to have an independent CPA perform an audit annually for them. And it's really management's responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then as your auditor, my team and I come in and we audit that information presented. And really what you're looking for from the auditor is what was the opinion on those financial statements. And the district was issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance offered, and it means there's no material modifications that need to be made to those financial statements. So, I always like to tell my districts, if you're looking for a letter grade, that would be an A for you on your audit report. So, great job. So, now we'll kind of talk about the numbers and what they are. And just wanted to point out that these are through June 30th, 2024. So, I know it's probably old news to you, but we'll just point out some of the highlights here. The first column is your general fund, which is the main operating fund of the district. A couple of things to point out here is you have cash of a little over $19 million, very similar to the balance that you had last year at this time as well. And then if you move down a little bit about the fourth line down, you can see due from other governmental units. So, that's a little over $10.5 million. What that is, that's your state aid. We booked the July and August state aid because you don't have it in cash as of June 30th, so that's a receivable, as well as some of the federal grants that we did request for that you didn't have as of June 30th. So, your total assets in your general fund were about $31 million. Now, in the middle of the page are the liabilities, so we have some accrued salaries payable. It's really just the timing of when those salaries have been earned but haven't been paid yet, as well as the related benefits. And what I know that most board members are focused on, too, is what is our fund balance at the end of the year? So, for your general fund, your fund balance at the end of the year was $16.6 million. And if you look at the unassigned, it is $12.3 million. And we do a calculation where we take that fund balance as And we do a calculation where we take that fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. And that equates to, a roundup is 15%, so I think it's 14.7%. But MDE does have a recommendation out there that they like to see that number between 15 and 20%. So you're right within the range, just on the lower end of that range too. Now, the other columns that we have, the second column is your capital projects, general property maintenance fund. And then the third column there are all your other funds combined together into that one column. So that includes your community service fund, your food service fund, student activities fund, your multiple debt and multiple capital projects funds are all included in there. And this is how it's required to be reported, and the detail of each of those funds are in those financial statements if you ever wanted to look at them. Now, the next couple of slides I have then are the same funds, but now we're looking at the revenue and expenditures for them. And you can see we have local sources, which the majority of that is your property taxes, your state sources, which is the state aid, federal sources, so their Title I money, your IDEA, the COVID ESER funds are all in there. And then your inter-district sources, the majority of that is the PA 18, the county special education millage. That's where those funds are recorded in your inter-district sources. So your general fund revenue was a little over 83 million, with expenditures coming in at about 82 million. So you had an excess of about 966,000 before we get to your transfers in and out on the next page. If you look on the right two columns there, if we're comparing 24 to 23, you can see your revenues did increase, the majority of that was related to increase in property tax values, as well as an increase in a couple of the state aid categoricals that you received as well. Towards the bottom of the page and looking at expenditures, those were just up slightly over last year as well. So here you can see the net change in fund balances is really what you're looking at. So the general fund did dip into their fund balance about 154,000 this year. The non-major funds, so all of those other funds combined together, it was about 172,000. One thing I didn't put in the slides that I do want to point out when I was preparing for your presentation is what a remarkable job the board does, and I know it comes from Kathy's team as well, is that your budget is, you know, between 83 to 85 million, and how close you are with your final budget to actual dollars. And it was amazing to me to see how close you were. You don't typically see that, especially with a budget this size. So great job there of watching those changes in the revenue and expenditures, and then making those decisions to have those board amendments approved too. So great job there. Now, my next couple of slides are pictures. I always feel like graphs, so it's the easier way to kind of see where those monies are coming or going. Here, we just wanted to point out your state and local sources. When we add those two together, it's about 87% of your general fund revenue are coming from those two sources. The rest of them are really in line with where they were last year as to where the inflows of revenue are coming from. In the expenditure side, we have, you know, salaries and employee benefits make up about 79%, which obviously that's very typical for schools, is the majority of your expenditures are related to people and those benefits that are attached to them. We also have been charting your per pupil analysis for your general fund revenue and expenditures. So we take your pupil count and then use your revenue and expenditures just to see how much are you spending and receiving per pupil. And this chart has, you know, seen a gradual upward trend since the pandemic as there's been quite an influx in additional revenue passed to the district. However, for 2025, based on the projected numbers, there is a budgeted decrease there that you can see for your revenue too. The general fund fund balance is also required to be broken down into a couple of different buckets. So we have what we have considered for assigned general fund fund balance and then unassigned. And you have a little bit of non-spendable, which is related to some prepaid. But the assigned, which is the green section, is a little over 4 million, and that is related to incumbents' plan for future spending, as well as some sick and vacation payouts for the future, with the majority of the general fund fund balance being unassigned at about 12.3 million. This one's exciting too. I'm, I'm happy that I can report that there's been an increase here. You know, I think this has been a common trend at most of the districts in the state of seeing this decline in student enrollment. So it's really nice to see an increase of about 55, 56 students. As you know, your state aid revenue is dependent upon the pupil count, so it's really good to see an increase here. I also have a slide in here about your bond progress. So your 2020 bond, you have about 33.5 million in revenue, and you have spent about 32 million of that through June 30th. So a little over one and a half million remains to be spent over the next year. Now, in addition to the audit, we're also required to communicate to the board some specific items. One is there was an adoption of another GASBIE, so that's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Those are the rule setters. They really tell us what do we need to audit, what do we need to report, how do we record it? So there was a new one this year, it's called the Accounting Changes and Error Corrections. You did not have any accounting changes or error corrections in this year, so it didn't change anything that you have within the financial statements. But going forward, if there are error corrections, it's some additional reporting that we will have to show in the financial statements in the footnotes. And also just wanted to point out that we did not have any significant audit adjustments during our audit procedures. We're also required to gain an understanding of the district's internal controls when we're here doing the audit. So not only do we look at all the financial information, but we look at policies and procedures. And we are happy to report we did not identify any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies. And the only management comment or recommendation that we have is the same one you had last two years. It's because you have too much money in your food service fund, based on a calculation we're required to do by the state. I know you have already sent in your spend down plan, and that is projected to be paid or to be resolved in June 30th, by June 30th, 2025. And that's because all those students were getting free lunches, and so it's hard to spend those funds, which is another very common recommendation that we've had at most of our districts that we audit. The single audit, so because you do receive more than $750,000 in federal grants, we're required to do like a program-specific audit. So there's a calculation we do that tells us which funds that we have to audit. And this year we had to audit two major programs, your coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, as well as your education stabilization fund. And those guidelines come from the feds, so there's no gray area. The answers are yes or no, and it's a lot of compliance requirements. So a great job at not having any recommendations or non-compliance items related to those federal grants too. In auditing those two major programs, we did test about 41% of your total federal expenditures. Out of, the total was about 5.4 million is what your total is, and we audited about 41% of that. So my last slide that I have really is just some future challenges. As you're well aware too, I know we talked about it last year, is that unfunded pension liability. It's about 113.1 million, those are those legacy costs through MIPSers, and there's a lot of expectations that go into it, so it's a significant estimate that is in your financial statements. And also just wanted to point out that the ESER funding is ending a couple of weeks, in September 30th here. So, you know, that was a nice revenue stream that we had for a couple of years, but just knowing that that is coming to an end, and I know in communications with Kathy too, that you guys have done a really good job at planning for that and budgeting for that going into the future. So it's of no surprise to anybody. So with that, I just want to say thank you to Kathy and her team for all of their efforts. They really make the audit a priority. Me being here tonight, being able to present this early with a district your size is remarkable. I have a couple of schools, I haven't even started their audit yet, so, you know, and they're all due November 1st, so great job there. It really is a group effort, we go back and forth, we discuss things, you know, we make sure that it's a good final product that we get out the door that has been uploaded to the state, to MDE already. So just want to say thank you to Kathy and her team. Are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Thank you for the work. I'd rather do the numbers than audit the numbers, any day. I appreciate that, thank you.
I'd just like to thank Jamie and her team, they do a great job, they come well-prepared, they communicate with everybody on my staff very well. It's a, it's a very much collaborative effort, so thank you. Please thank Joey and the rest of the team as well.
I sure will, thank you.
Well, and thank you to Mrs. Isabella and her team for the work that's done. Again, I know it's not fun, but it has to happen. But we, I, you know, we appreciate the effort and the time that it takes to do that work, plus working on budget-related items and stuff all at the same time, so we're grateful to that. Thank you so much. I'm sorry everybody didn't come to see you.
Oh, it's okay.
Sorry. Item 5.3 Diversity, Equity, and, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. Item 5.2.1 Acceptance of the Audit. Do I have a recommendation? Mrs. Cook?
Resolve, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby accepts the independent audit report as presented by Yo and Yo for the 2023-24 fiscal year, which ended June 30th, 2024. Yo and Yo completed their audit with an unmodified opinion, and a complete report has been presented to the Board of Education. The audit report and resolution indicating acceptance will be filed in accordance with state and local laws.
Thank you, can I have a second? Mrs. Anderson? Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Johorski?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Item 5.3 Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Ashley Phillips.
Okay, there we are, good evening, everyone. We have quite a lot that has happened between August and September. So we'll go over some things from the Tri-County Conference, New Teacher Orientation kickoff for our keynote, Launch Into Learning, the Oakland Schools HBCU College Expo, DEI and its Sustainability, Jedi Educator Summit, Continuing It Social Worker, and Ending With Religious Diversity Journeys. So we started off August taking a few of our staff members out to Levonia to a Tri-County Conference that featured Oakland Schools, Rain Risa, and Washena ISD. And we had lots of keynote speakers and different breakout sessions, but the theme was Teaching to Liberate, and we talked about radical dreaming and asking students, asking about if students have asked about, been asked about their dreams and what they dream about, and if teachers have listened to that. And we were able to watch just different videos from students saying their experiences with teachers in the classroom if they've asked about their dreams and how they really have listened to them. Understanding and interrogating our own biases, especially in our classrooms, and working with students on our caseload. And lastly, collaboration, communication, and civility. We talked about how it is when we come to the table with different stakeholders and different opinions all around the table, and how do we work together to keep the students first and focused. Next up, we had the New Teacher Orientation Summit. So glad to see a lot of the familiar faces. We were able to, at the very beginning, host the tables where the new teachers and staff members got to go around and meet different district members, district staff members. But then we also had a breakout session for DEI, so I was able to talk to them about different things with first congratulating them and welcoming them to the team. But we did a connector activity, they got to meet me. We talked about DEI in action in the classroom and in the district in general. We went over the late start PDs for DEI that the staff members learned about last year. We just did a recap and dived deeper into implicit bias, which was session three. We talked about an inclusion focus and what the staff members could do, either with students on their caseload, students in their building, and students in their classroom. And we talked about making sure that we pour into ourselves, so we had a self-care part, where we talked all about you, and that was the new staff members. We had a little raffle with some different gifts and some time that was given as well, and just a thank you for them coming aboard. We have so many amazing staff members that have joined us, I'm very, very proud of our hiring process. Next up, the following week, we were excited to bring Dr. Sean Woodley, who's a speaker, a former educator, author, and education consultant as well, to kickoff our keynote, our first kickoff as the keynote and speaker. And he had a message themed "Your Year of Impact." I was so excited to bring Sean aboard to talk about culturally responsive instruction, providing psychologically safe learning environments, establishing and maintaining those trust and connections between students, parents, and all of the stakeholders aboard. Audience Analysis, the best thing is to get to know your students. So he definitely emphasized that and how to spark engagement in the classroom. And last but not least, unlocking the intellectual treasure that all of our students possess. We got lots of great feedback from Dr. Woodley, and we were so excited to hear his message. The very next day, or two days later, we had our Launch Into Learning, and I hosted three sessions for DEI, 101, the deeper dive, and was geared towards newer staff members who were either joined the district after December 2023, around the time that I came aboard, or who wanted to learn more about DEI and what they can do in their classrooms and with their caseload as well. Their first task was to complete a survey where they just had a couple of minutes to describe DEI in one word. So some of the words that popped out were inclusion, equity, diversity, of course, growth. I love that I saw that it was needs, space, collaboration, just so many great adjectives and different ideas that we talked about. And they were able to see a graphic, they just broke down the different connections that I have throughout the district and throughout our community as well. They talked about, we talked about together, rather, the history of DEI in Royal Oak Schools and the sessions one, two, and three as well for last year's DEI PD. So we talked about social identity, privilege, and inclusion. And then again, an emphasis on implicit bias. We dived a little deeper into creating inclusive learning environments, so what we can do in our own classrooms to make sure that they are safe spaces. Then lastly, we went over an overview of what DEI will look like for this school year. As I ended both of those sessions with the new teachers and with the Launch Into Learning, we focused on how we can positively influence students' academic mindset. So students in our classrooms and on our caseload should be able to say these four things. I belong in this academic community, my ability and competence grow with my effort, so they should be able to see their hard work actually growing with that. I can succeed at this, and this work has value for me. Above all, I said that we need to believe in our students. So I gave two examples of two gentlemen who believed in me and definitely positively influenced my academic mindset back in middle school. So on the left, we have Christopher Holstein. He was my math teacher who made us love, love, love math. He also was our academic games coach, so there was not a time that we could, there was not a time that you couldn't find us in his room during lunch, playing equations, linguistics, talking about multiplicative inverse, and just loving slope intercept, all the things math, he made us love it and just made us feel welcome and loved. And on the right is the most brave gentleman, Mr. Dave Perry. He started me off on cello in fifth grade at nine years old with my clumsy hands and all. He believed in me, he knew that I could succeed at this. He knew that I see my effort, that my ability and competence would grow with my effort. And he, they both played a part, but he's one of the big parts that, that played into me going into education. And on the left again, Mr. Holstein is still teaching, this is probably his 54th year teaching, and he's at Bates Academy right now. So fast forward to talking about the future as well. We will have our Oakland Schools HBCU College Expo is going to feature, and actually this number has gone up this evening. So we'll feature historically-backed colleges and universities over at the main campus for Oakland University, or I'm sorry, for Oakland Schools. I've been working with the high school and with Oakland Schools' career readiness consultant to figure out all the different things that the students can embark in on that day. So on September 27th, we'll be heading over to Oakland Schools between 10:00 and 11:30 to meet with the recruiters from the schools, to learn about the academic programs. They were advised to bring their portfolios and different things that they've been doing in school to kind of align it with the recruiters on maybe possibly receiving scholarships or scholarship offers on the spot. And they will gain insights about the admissions process as well. But on the flip side, so I'll also be attending with the students, but I'll be in dual roles to try to gain more footage with our goal four from the strategic plan. So I know that we want to attract and retain great staff, which we're doing really well. We will have those HBC recruiters there, and I will be there representing Royal Oak Schools, handing them my card and saying, please send us your future teachers as well as their day graduates. So we will establish those connections there. And just this week, we, I was able to meet with Angela Fox from Royal Oak. And just this week, we, I was able to meet with Angela Fox from Royal Oak's Sustainability Program. And I was, this was very fortunate because it birthed from an idea of us just talking a couple of months ago here at the June School Board Meeting. I met her, and we exchanged information and talked about some intersectionalities between DEI and sustainability. We talked about the biggest thing with our students is education. So educating our community, starting with our students, talking about food waste, forming these green teams, and talking about environmental justice, and especially in April, doing Earth Day activities. She asked me to please share this flyer out with everyone that I believe is being shared with our schools as well for the September 23, 6:00 PM meeting. So that will be here at the board office. We need green team volunteers. So she said, some schools have a lot in volunteers that may be helping with this. Other schools may need some more support. So September 23, please come out to hear that. And at our last meeting, I talked about the Jedi Educator Summit. Because a lot of the enrollment has increased, we've updated the location. It's actually going to be at Oakland Schools' main campus. And here's just a peek at some of the presenters. We will still have about 13 sessions that will go into the different tracks for leadership and inclusion. But we want to really feature that a lot of the districts that are nearby will be featured there that evening, or I'm sorry, that day, as well as myself representing Royal Oak School. So back in the winter, I started meeting with Churchill, and we talked about some things for a grant application that they had, and they wanted to identify some things that intersected with DEI work as well. But then we talked about retention and barriers and what kind of barriers we can remove for the students. So after talking with their team and figuring out some things that we needed to put in place, the role for the social worker position was identified. This will be someone who will work one-on-one with the students and really find out what would help to make this experience better. What can we do to keep you here? And the goal, as my graduation cap is saying there, is graduation. They are going to assess, analyze, and assist in the areas of student retention and accessibility, and they will work with school and home. So we, when we put those two together, we should have magic that happens. So we are very, very excited that, starting next week, we will be interviewing candidates for this position. And last but not least, Kristin Meldrick wanted me to make sure that I mentioned the Religious Diversity Journeys are starting at Rhames for the 7th graders. So this is a program that she talked to me about in the spring, and we started some information calls and just info meetings with the Interfaith Leadership Council of Metropolitan Detroit. And they talked about the agenda that they have for the students. It's usually just five to six trips throughout the year. They will be able to meet other students from different districts that will be involved. This is actually the 23rd year of RDJ's running, but it's really to enrich instruction, engage students, and to activate the curiosity. I always say the best way to learn something that you don't know and to remove any ignorance there is to actually get educated on it. So the students will kind of be immersed in the culture there. They will have a culturally-connected lunch at most of the field trips, and we will have an October meeting on October 2 to meet with the representatives and so that parents can join in and answer questions. I was able to personally speak about some of my former students who participate in RDJ, and you'll see a couple of them in this video here.
And the overall journey of this experience is so eye-opening and learning about people and not just judging them first is like the biggest thing that you can take away from this journey.
I just wanted to tell you how much he really, truly enjoyed RDJ this year. And I'm so pleased that you kept it going, and, you know, I really hope this keeps going in the future. I have a daughter that's in second grade now. I'd love for her to have the same experience. He has come home after every field trip so excited to tell us what he learned and how much fun it was and trying on the different, you know, ethnic clothing and the different foods and the art. And then today, he was just over the moon going to the DIA. So I, again, just wanted to call and tell you, I really, truly am thankful that you did this with the students and how much we all appreciated it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Cinski?
I have a question. Well, I want to go on the field trips is what I really want to do. But we're just always so thrilled by everything that you present with us. The, the, the HBCU.
For the college.
Resource fair, yeah. So you're taking some ROHS students with you?
So I'll be meeting them there because I also have a, the Systems of Inequity series is starting in that same location. So it all works out. I'll be there for the full day, but it will be our career development and the, one of the counselors as well from the high school. And we're taking about 40 senior, 40 students there as well.
Oh, excellent. Okay, yeah, that was my question. Cool. That's so exciting. Great.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook?
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the keynote address by Dr. Sean Woodley. It's a tough act to follow Officer Yurkey, but he absolutely delivered. And I also wanted to, so thank you for bringing him to our district for that. And I also wanted to thank you for, you know, making sure that one of our new staff members was welcomed. I really do appreciate that, and that's, of course, our intention for all of our, all of the people who come to our schools. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you as always for everything that you do. It's always, you know, it's a month, but there's always a lot. So really appreciative of all that, and I'm certain our staff and our students really appreciate it as well. So thank you for all the work that you continue to do. Moving on to item 5.4, our student representatives. We have Charlie Francis and Leilani Hamilton. If you wanted, we introduced you at one of our prior board meetings, but if you wanted to just say a little bit about yourself before you give a board report, we'd love that.
Hello, I'm Leilani Hamilton. I am a junior at the high school. I am dual-enrolled in one of the programs at the high school that we offer, the ACE program, which allows me to do college classes and get an associate's degree for free and have the choices of those classes and the degree there, while I'm also enrolled in the DP program for the high school as a junior. And I would have to say the amount of programs that we have here is honestly like, like good overwhelming. Everything that I've been able to do has been amazing, been able to be in drama club, baking club, and just meet the amazing staff that everyone has hired. And I would have to say that the high school has been one of the favorite things here. I moved here from Texas, as I say every time, but it's such a great community that I was able to move into. And I'm just excited to honestly just stay here in this city for all of my life and hopefully have like other people that can be like, hey, I had this teacher. And I'll be like, yeah, but I had him first. So I was better. And I would just have to say, that's really about it. This place was, this place is amazing. And I'm really happy to be on the school board and help talk about issues or anything. Well, not issues, you know what I mean. Talk about anything.
Hi, my name is Charles Francis. I go by Charlie, but either is fine. I'm also taking DP classes and some AP classes. I ran the School Board Raven Rally Table last Friday, where we just ask questions to students and concerns they had going into the school year. I'm also very happy to be here on the board.
I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to talk about, and I didn't.
I don't know. There's, all the other, other programs that we had on here with the diversity and equity, that seems just amazing. I do wish that we have that program for the high schoolers, because I would love to see other high schoolers have to deal with the, well, not deal, have to understand and understand the other things that happen on the, in our school, because there are many different cultures and many like, like things that people do. Because at lunches, they have the fasting. You can go to the learning comments instead of going to eat. And I don't feel like many people understand that. I feel like there are people that sign out to go to the lunches to go fast, but they're not part of the culture, and they take up the space that might actually be needed by other people. And so I do feel like it would be a good thing to have for the high school. Well, it's not exactly needed, just maybe like a, like more attention and more publicity of the, like, diversity club that talks about it, or something like another program like that. I'm also saying that because I wasn't here in seventh grade and I just want to go. But I do feel like the, like, programs and the clubs and everything that we just have here, it's, it's a community that we build, and I'm really happy to see it being built. And I feel like there are some people that just don't know the community that we have here, and they feel as if they're alone. And I'm happy to be on the school board so I can show people the programs that we have. We have started an Instagram account. It is the ROHS School Board, well, not the ROHS, it's the RO School School Board on the Instagram, and I want to add more, like, posts about honestly anything that we have, like the HBUC, all that. I messed that up big time. Everything about that, so everyone knows that there is a community here for them, whether they see it or not, whether they look for it or not. And I'm sure that there's something for everybody.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate that, and thank you for being at the Raven Rally, and thank you for your conversations with students everywhere, and your ideas are certainly welcome and love to talk about them more. So I was lucky to have, oh, Mrs. Cinski, question.
I mean, you can finish your thought.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. Charlie, could you tell us a little bit more about that feedback that you got at the table the other day?
So there were a lot of serious concerns, like gun violence in schools, and there were also a lot of, not necessarily silly concerns, but just like, concerns like the lunchroom being too cold or the bathroom smelling, like, I don't know, it's a high school, so.
Mrs. Anderson?
I enjoyed the lunches with the students last year. Are we going to be arranging those again? I felt like I, we had good dialogues at those.
Leilani? I was wondering if those would be in the roost again as last year, or wherever they were last year. I feel like the roost would just be like, the roost was a nice place in the hallway where a lot of people just knew where it was, and it was the same area of the lunchroom, so the safe, well, shield weren't like, where were you going? It was just, I really liked it. I wasn't able to attend to all of them. I think I went to about like one and had to go because my friends wouldn't stop texting me about their issues. But yeah, I just wanted to know if that would be in the roost, or where would that be this year?
I think we had some that were in the roost, and we had some in the cafeteria, or maybe it was something else. I feel like we were in both spaces, but.
I did speak with Mr. Loomis today about getting those arranged and have some ideas to talk to Mrs. Van Heitzma about, but our plan would be to be in the roost again and also to have our delicious lunch supplied by our food service up to that room. So we'll be getting those started, I guess, very shortly. But thank you.
Thank you.
I was able to have lunch with our students. They all have the same lunch hour. So our, our finance and facility students and our two board members here, so it's actually convenient, you know, to be able to meet and have conversations all together. So that's actually really, I'm excited about that. I don't know if you are, but I'm really excited about that. But yeah, thank you. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier too, we can have conversations about other things that come up. And Mrs. Fitzpatrick is available for those conversations as well, so I think that's really important, so. And nobody seems to have any issues approaching Mr. Loomis with any questions or concerns either. So the group seems very comfortable in the space, so I'm very excited about that. So thank you, guys. And I know the, the audit was riveting too, wasn't it? I just wanted to point that out. Thank you so much. Item 6, Proclamations and Recognitions. 6.1 Board Proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month. Mrs. Cook?
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a month-long celebration of Hispanic and Latino history and culture, and is important because it provides an opportunity to celebrate the integral part the Hispanic-Latino community has had in growing and strengthening our democracy. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides an additional opportunity to explore the incredible impact Latinas and Latinos have had on the United States, Michigan, and Royal Oak for generations. And whereas the Latino presence in America spans centuries, predating Spain's colonization of what is now part of the United States, and they have been an integral part of shaping our nation since the Revolutionary War. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a week-long celebration in 1968 under President Johnson and was expanded to a month by President Reagan 20 years later in 1988. The month-long celebration provides more time to properly recognize the significant contributions Hispanic-Latino Americans have made in the United States. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month does not cover one single month, but instead begins in the middle of September and ends in the middle of October, the timeframe of this month is significant because many Central American countries celebrate their independence days within these dates, beginning on September 15 with Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. By aligning these, with these independence states, Hispanic Heritage Month honors the resilience and determination of the Hispanic community. And whereas we will continue to advocate for Hispanics, Latinos as representation matters. Latinos and Latinas continue to shape our nation as business owners, activists, artists, public servants, and more. From serving in the US military to being champions in the fight for civil rights, Latinas and Latinos remain strong leaders and change makers. Now therefore, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education does hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month for Royal Oak Schools.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Mrs. Alexander? Can we have a roll call, please?
I will vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Johorski?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item 6.2 Board Proclamation, Suicide Prevention Month. Mrs. Alexander?
Whereas suicide is among the top 10 leading causes of death in the United States, resulting in about one death every 11 minutes. Additionally, suicide attempts result in an even larger number of non-fatal intentional self-harm injuries. Suicide is a problem throughout the lifespan. In the US, it is the second-leading cause of death for people 10 to 34 years of age, the fourth-leading cause among people 35 to 54 years of age, and the eighth-leading cause among people 55 to 64 years of age. And whereas September is known as Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which mental health advocates, individuals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and communities around the country unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. And whereas September 8 to the 14th is National Suicide Prevention Week, with World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10, 2024. And whereas Royal Oak Schools publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas all Royal Oak residents are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards reducing suicides. And whereas September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month and provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis. As the world joins together to honor the memories of those we lost to suicide and their loved ones, may we recommit to ensuring that help and support are accessible to all of our citizens. Now therefore, Royal Oak Schools does hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month and September 8 to the 14th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week.
Thank you. Can I have a second, Mrs. Cook? Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee, Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Johorski?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and the motion passes.
Thank you. Item 6.3 Board Proclamation, Be Smart About Gun Safety. Mrs. Cinski?
Whereas guns are the number-one killer of children and teens in the United States, and whereas we are committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and well-being of our children, and whereas almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the United States. And whereas research shows that one of the best ways to protect children and teens from accessing guns implements, is to implement secure firearm storage practices. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to prevent. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to prevent children from accessing firearms is to make sure all guns are stored unloaded, locked, and separate from ammunition. And whereas there are steps we can all take, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, to make sure kids can't access guns and put themselves and others in danger. And whereas an estimated fifty-four percent of gun owners don't lock all of their guns and all of their guns securely. And an estimated four point six million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded gun in the United States. And whereas when guns aren't properly stored, tragedy can strike, whether it's a child finding a firearm and injuring or killing themselves or someone else, or someone stealing it and using it to commit a crime in our communities. And whereas schools are committed to their crucial role in reducing injuries and deaths by promoting secure gun storage and safety. And whereas the Be Smart Framework raises awareness and promotes efforts to educate the public about secure gun storage, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education commends Be Smart, a program developed to help keep our communities safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education and the superintendent will continue to work with local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofits to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents about secure storage of firearms in their homes.
Thank you. Can we have a second, please? Mr. Chorski, can we have a roll call?
Trustee Chorski?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
And this motion passes as well.
Thank you.
Can I say? Right, um for those of you still with us too, um there are gun locks and further information about the Be Smart program by the door on your way out.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Item number seven, communications, Mrs. Anderson.
We have received zero communications since our last meeting.
Thank you. Item number eight is our consent agenda. Items included are eight point one, payment of expenses. Do we have any additions or deletions? Seeing none, a consent agenda passes as presented. Moving on to items for discussion and action, nine point one, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. Um I do want to take this opportunity just to uh highlight the commitment by this board, by our administrators, and actually all of our staff, starting with our brand-new staff that joined us this year and those that have been with us for a while. And that is to keep school safety, the safety of each other as colleagues, uh and our children every single day a priority. Um we do have a new uh community school safety advisory committee that is beginning to meet. We are meeting quarterly and that's really a chance for leaders in the community, members from ROPD, from the district, board members, um some of our school administrators serve on that as well, as well as Jason Russell from a safety consultant for schools. And we had a a great first meeting to get it going. Uh we did identify a a number of questions and/or areas that we want to ensure that our committee in-house, our administrators, that Mr. Walensky and our team meets with, um are addressing. Uh and I'm happy to report that we've now uh built in time on our late start schedule to do a regular reminder to all staff about some of our safety protocols and procedures, so it isn't a special event, never has been. Uh but we now have a list of those topics and we can ensure that each school is receiving those updates at the late start meetings on Wednesdays, and that has really been helpful for us as well. Uh we also um do appreciate all of the feedback. Um it is difficult communicating after an emergency. But the safety of the students, uh anyone that was at the game that evening and any day in school is always a priority for us. Uh we have a lot of decisions to make and a lot of information to process and we do our best to share what we can. But know that um we do um work very hard to ensure that everyone is safe at all of our events, and in fact, uh Mr. Russell is working with um our team and the MHSAA to specifically talk about safety and security at large school events. Uh and that is something that he is involved with at a state level, so we feel doubly honored that he's also on our advisory committee right here locally in Royal Oak. So we will be taking part in those trainings and updates um with MHSAA alongside of him and his company as well. Also tonight, there are several items um on the agenda for your consideration. The first is item nine point one point one. And it is the first reading of revised or replaced or recommended policies and guidelines. Uh the board does have a policy committee that I meet with regularly. Neola is our advisors on policy and school changes, and we have a first set for your consideration this evening.
Before I ask for a recommendation, just um mentioning about school safety, so just we had the change with our Safe Ed, which is now a different company. But our um our team looks different in the buildings. Can you just make a mention of that as well?
Oh, I sure can. So also, uh Mr. Russell had been our consultant, if you recall, did the safety audit within the district and he came and gave us direct feedback and suggestions that then changed some things for us in professional development, protocols and procedures. And in fact, at our meeting, was complimentary of the number of things that the district has acted upon that he actually, that he had in that safety audit. Um his company has now purchased what was formerly known as Safe Ed. They are now Shield. And I applaud you. Thank you. I heard you say Shield tonight. They were identifiable in the buildings. They were adults that worked both at ROMs and at our high school in yellow shirts. They now have a different color polo that they wear with the Shield logo on it. Um and they are in the buildings, but we continue to employ them and in fact have expanded the contract to have them join us for special events in the evenings just as additional adult supervision. Uh and they will be joining us for those as well, so it it is, um many of the staff stayed the same. But there are some changes that we have appreciated. Uh one of those changes has been a uh very long list of standardized practices and professional development that is now offered to every employee of Shield. And those staff members took a part in those um different trainings this summer and then brought that new learning with them to work when we opened school, so very appreciative of the change and that close relationship with them, but we continue to have them in in the middle school and the high school.
Any questions? Can we have a recommendation, please? Nine point one point one, first reading of revised, replaced, and/or recommended policies and guidelines. Mrs. Anderson?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a first reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced, and/or recommended as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chorski?
I just want to thank the work of the policy committee for curing my concerns with PO zero one five five and working to a agreement that I think we all can agree with. So again, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Can we have a second? Ms. Yusinski, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
And Trustee Chorski?
Yes.
And this motion passes.
Thank you. Item.
I was just going to say, item nine point one point two um is related to the PTA assignments. Our Board of Education members each participate in the PTA meetings out in our community on a monthly basis. And I also attend the PTA council meetings and try to, of course, make it out to as many PTA events and meetings as I can. Um our community is very well-supported by the parents, a very active parent group, which we appreciate. And I also appreciate the board members being liaisons from uh the district level to each of those school buildings monthly at their meetings and interested in their feedback and uh comments and questions, so thank you to the board members, but tonight on your agenda is a consideration for the assignments for those for this school year.
Thank you. Can we have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Alexander?
Resolve that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves PTA liaison assignments for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Ms. Yusinski, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Chorski?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
And I, and the motion.
Thank you.
Also, nine point one point three uh is with regard to the voting delegates for the uh Michigan Association of School Boards. M A S B is a uh organization that backs all school boards across the state of Michigan, lends support for professional development. They are always available for comments and questions from us, as well as all board members. And uh they offer professional development for our board members about various topics for running the school district, as well as things that we do on a daily basis. And so on tonight's agenda is a consideration for uh attendance by our delegate.
Thank you. Can I have a resolution? Ms. Yusinski?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education names Tim Chakorski as Royal Oak Schools Voting Delegate at the M A S B twenty twenty-four Delegate Assembly.
Thank you. Can I have a second, Mrs. Alexander? Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
I will vote yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Chorski?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
The motion passes and thank you to Trustee Chorski for representing us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item nine point two, curriculum instruction, Dr. Yuanis.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Heitzma. This is a very exciting time of the year, as we saw earlier with our new staff members joining our buildings, and we're excited to have them, so our insight into curriculum video for this month is gonna focus on how our teachers across all levels prepare for the new and upcoming school year, so um you're gonna see a lot of excitement here and I think it fits in perfectly with everything with our kickoff for the year.
School is back in session. Teachers and students are excited for another great year of learning and fun. But how do teachers get ready for the school year? Let's take a look.
So have have really spent this first week um working hard, building some relationships, getting to know students as well as you can in a first week, uh establishing norms in our classroom. Uh and so far, like we're off to a a really strong start.
I feel like every year we try to start off with some stuff that's the same, like we have like a routine of like our morning meeting that a lot of students are comfortable with, with setting expectations and, you know, here's classroom rules, going through attendance, but then we try to get them really involved in the process of, hey, what do we want our classroom to look like and what kinds of things do we want around the room? So each year we change. Um we'll have other job sites. All the students work at a job site in the afternoon and they'll help us create and print out new pictures for the new job sites if they change or with the new students that are gonna be there. We also have students will say, hey, we're sharing current events. Do you have anything that you want to share with the class? What'd you do over the weekend or what do you want to share? You know, if your birthday's coming up, so we really try to create like a close-knit community with our students, really just making a classroom community and feeling welcome, I guess.
Yeah, so I feel like we try to make it an inviting space. Um I think we both have a a really nice carpet area on the front, so we pull the kids up to the front a lot of times and they can kind of collaborate up there. Um our furniture is new and obviously mobile to be able to group them in any different way that we want. Um we both are fortunate to have some pretty extensive libraries where the kids can go and pick books from all different genres and authors, um so that that kind of physical space is nice for them.
I think also we both have very warm and inviting like atmospheres when you walk in. It's just very like bright and colorful and just, I think a lot of kids enjoy that as well.
One of the things is just the structure of my classroom. There's a lot of, uh you know, we're like almost a U shape and we can get a lot of eyes on each other and hear each other, and that's just, you know, one part of your classroom environment, but it it's really like sort of on day one, giving them a sense of what a history class is and what it's gonna be and maybe breaking down some of the the myths or some of the stereotypes that they think we're going to do in a history class. Because it's a little bit different than what they've had in necessarily sixth and seventh grade, so like that's to me is a big part of, you know, the starting point. What are what are we gonna do in a history class? What are we trying to do? Then we talk a lot about, you know, it's about skills, more so than memorizing things. We can Google all these answers. We can find them. Those are, and we'll do that a lot to find some facts, so it's the skills to do that. And then it's just kind of talking to them about giving their best effort. Um eighth grade, super important. Next year, if you fail, it's a credit. It's it's a different sort of animal in that regard, and I think many students going through school, they they know what high school is. They've heard about it enough. So this is such a great opportunity, such a great age to get themselves prepared for ninth grade. So I I tell them, it's about effort. We know that if if we do nothing every day, kind of the result in that, but if we bring our best and we try, we, even if we fail, we're gonna learn from it.
Yeah, so there are a few things that I like to do. Um one is with my seating arrangements, so I have them in groups to hopefully foster a little bit more um talking and discussion because that's such a big part of the work that we do. Um especially since English is geared toward communicating and communicating effectively. And then I do like to do things with my decor to try to um include a lot of things that are friendly and inviting. I recently added the flags for my uh international uh travels from this past summer. That way the kids get to know stuff about me and then also hopefully feel themselves represented and welcomed in this space.
One of the things over the last couple of years that I devoted a little more time to is our current events, so you know, through that, we're gonna learn a little bit about like the election, but we're just, we're able to make such great connections when uh we're doing things that are happening in in, you know, everyday life and then students can make connections with those things to history. I've found through the years that uh it's it's super beneficial to to their understanding.
One of the things that I'm planning to do is more of like um specific to some of my classes. Um and I'm really actually kind of excited because I get to teach eleven again this year, which I haven't for a few years. And we're trying to do some work with podcast stuff, which is just another way to introduce conversations and things in the world, and I'm really excited to kind of work with some new technology and hopefully s- get students to understand how their voices, their stories matter and how we can make this for a real audience and not just something that's limited to a classroom setting.
So we are both piloting some new ELA curriculum this year. Um I've been on the ELA leadership team for the last couple of years. So we were vetting out curriculum, um so it's brand-new ELA, a long time coming. Really excited to get the kids into this curriculum with the hopes of adopting something new for next year, so.
Yeah, and for me, as a first-year teacher, everything is brand-new, so I'm really just excited to just jump right in, just enjoy all of it.
It's been a really rewarding first week. They usually are in the sense that we've worked on community building. Um we've worked on sort of talking about what history is, why it's it's valuable, why it, as you get older, I hear so many parents go, I really didn't like history when I was in school, but now I can't get enough of it. So that's what we've spent time on doing and um, you know, it's good to see I've I've had effort out of every student so far, and that's, that's a good place to start from.
So a a common theme that we see when we visit the school buildings the first couple of weeks is a lot of excitement and a lot of uh energy. But it's amazing to see how hard our teachers work um in the early months of August, late months of July. As a former building principal, there, we're constantly thinking about the next year, regardless of when they had to report, so um it's wonderful that in our schools, we have such dedicated teachers and staff members that that think about our kids and school pretty much all year round, so thank you for all of that. Also, along with some of the beginning of your activities are our curriculum nights that take place at all the levels. Our elementary curriculum night took place on September fifth, so that's also another big opportunity for parents and families to come into our schools, learn more about their uh classroom teacher, some of the policies and procedures. Uh next Monday, we have high school having their curriculum night at six P.M. and then next Tuesday, September seventeenth, the middle school will have the same opportunity, so again, just more excitement around our schools, more opportunities for our families to connect uh with our teachers and get a better understanding of some of the wonderful things we do in the classroom. Last thing, this last Wednesday, we had our first late start professional development time at the building level. Uh it was a time for our building principals to work with their staff. Uh they had opening meetings in late August or mid-August. Uh but this was a real chance to connect. Uh part of the topics really focused around the new teacher evaluation process. There's been some laws and things that have changed with that, so this was a good time to have a check-in um and kind of kick off the year and welcome everyone back, so again, proud to be a part of this district and have such wonderful staff and teachers that work hard to support all of our families and students. That's all I have for tonight. I have one more.
I was gonna say, I thought there was one more.
I wanted to see if people really thought I was done, you know, I'm not really done. I think some were excited over here. Can't be right. So I want to call to your attention uh item nine point two point one, Churchill Community High School Course Proposal in the area of Social Studies. With the title of the class, American Problems, for your consideration tonight, item nine point two point one.
Thank you. I was really actually excited to, as I read about the course. Is is there, how did it, how did we prompt to offer this course now, just out of curiosity?
So my understanding, again, it starts with our teachers. They're the ones that are either teaching current courses that they feel need some modification or um they're working in their professional learning communities to identify a specific need around a content area. So we have um some teachers at Churchill Community High School that identify So my understanding, again, it starts with our teachers. They're the ones that are either teaching current courses that they feel need some modification, or they're working in their professional learning communities to identify a specific need around a content area. So we have some teachers at Churchill Community High School that identified this course proposal as a need for our students to kind of focus on some content areas that maybe they felt or didn't have highlighted in what they were currently, were talking. Some of the objectives they've talked about is what unites us, free speech, American ideals, bullying in social media, and citizenship and immigration. So those are some of the focus topics, and the content areas and connections that they've made, racism and hate speech, police and justice systems, and student choice. So we're excited to have this opportunity and course for our students. But again, it starts with our teachers. Really, they're the ones that identify the areas of need and then work with our administrative team to get it to our board for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Can I have a recommendation, please? Mr. Chahorsky?
Resolve that the Royal Oak School Board of Education approves the following course for Churchill Community High School, beginning Fall 2024, "Social Problems," is the course.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Alexander? Can we have a roll call, please?
I'll vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Item 9.3 Finance and Facilities and Fund, Mrs. Abella.
Good evening. I have a few pictures of the bond work that was completed during the 2024 summer. We did the Adams Elementary Office remodel. You can see that on the screen. That is the entryway where the secretary and the clerk sit, right when you walk into the new secure entry, and then down the hall. A big change there. And then on the left is the teacher workroom that's at Adams Elementary, and on the right is the new ECC office remodeling. So there are a number of staff that work in that ECC office, and now there is enough space for all of them to work there. They're very happy with the enhancements there in that office, for sure. There is a new kitchen at Adams. They're going to start using it on Monday. It was, you know, delayed, which we knew. It was going to take a little longer than the 10 weeks of the summer to get that complete. All of the licensing has been done, and Mr. Jacobs and his staff have been able to move into the kitchen, but they needed a few days to learn the new equipment, how to use it. Some of it's, you know, newer, things that they hadn't used previously. So they wanted to start a week off right, and they're going to start serving meals out of the kitchen on Monday, the 16th. Keller, with their new kitchen, was able to grab up a whole new classroom. Keller was a junior high at one time, so the kitchen was much larger. So during that remodeling process, we were able to grab 800 square feet and make another class. That was very helpful to Keller, and you can see that we've added all the same technology that all other classrooms have, the Smartboard, the Epic, all of that is complete. I've walked in that classroom. It's lovely. You would have never known it wasn't there with the original bond work that we did in Keller, and I think that was 2019 when we did Keller. And then Keller got a new kitchen. Their staff, their kitchen staff is very excited about the the new kitchen. They have way more refrigerators and freezer space than you, they would have imagined. So they're very happy to be serving students out of that new kitchen. And then the final project that I wanted to highlight tonight is the lift. I just saw an email today. All of the permits have also been completed for the lift. We knew that it wasn't going to be available the first week or two of school. They're going to be training the staff next week on how this lift works. So that's going to be able to get students up to that mezzanine area where we have all the workout equipment up there, the weightlifting equipment. And then on the right, just to highlight, after the flood that we had a year ago, we had to redo the floor, and I just wanted to show you how beautiful that floor looks at Royal Oak Middle School. Do you have any questions about any of the bond work or sinking fund work that was done this summer? Okay, so, Ms. Revett was here with our audit, which was great news. So now that's that's complete. We're, of course, looking forward to the new school year and making sure all of those things are correct. Of course, we passed the 2425 budget in June, and so we had all of that in place. But now we're finalizing all of the forms, reports, applications that go along with completing that school year, the financial information database upload, our special ed cost report, the transportation cost report. All of those are getting filed and taken care of. Today, I attended virtually the M S B O M D E workshop, which I do each year in September. It's a great collaborative effort between M D E and M S B O to make sure we're highlighting all of the things that are important to know at the beginning of a school year. Lots of grants, lots of discussion about the 3% healthcare part of the O R S for those of us who do pay into that. There's still no guidance on how we're going to pay that back to staff. So lots of more to come, whether it's 27 K with the teacher payments, things like that. We're still waiting. There's there's not a lot of information on some of that stuff in the state. So coming soon. It was a good workshop, though. We're hopeful. There's a supplemental coming. I believe that the date that they used was September 26th is the date that they're kind of hoping for, because, of course, during the state fiscal 25 budget, there was a large reduction to 31 double A, which is our mental health and school safety grant. I believe it was cut 85% from last year, if I remember the number correctly. And so that was a that was a big loss to our district. And once again, like I said, we passed a budget in June with a structural deficit of $3.7 million, and we had included what we believed we were going to get from that. But good news, we had some savings. Ms. Revett also talked about S R 3 and 11 T, which is also a subset of S R 3, expiring on September 30th of 2024. Dr. Yuanis and I sat down just earlier this week to ensure that we were going to spend every last penny of those dollars. We re, well, not reapplied, but resubmitted during the amendment process. It's already been approved. So we are secure in the fact that we are going to be able to spend all of those dollars. So those remaining funds are also a savings to the fiscal 25 budget, because all of those federal funds were included in the '24 school budget. So those dollars will be now available in '25, and will be fully obligated by September 30th. So obligated means that we will make sure that there's any purchase orders for any things that are being supplied. We can't use it for any online programming or any school salaries after September 30th. So we have that. Just want to assure you that we have that all that all complete, and I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. So I know it was referred to in the audit, and they talked about the, just in pupil accounting, the number of students that we have in the district, and we will be taking a close look at attendance and then being able to file officially for the count for the school year, and that will be upcoming. And then could you just remind us, Mrs. Abella, when we would do a formal amendment possibly to this budget with all the changes that we may see this fall, or any adjustments by either the supplemental or a change in our student count?
So I did begin that, but tomorrow is our first pay of the new school year. So once we ensure that that's all gone through correctly, we're going to encumber all the payroll, and then we'll have, because that is 85% of our budget, is is our people that work here in the district. So my plan is to have it to you for the December meeting, that budget. We usually do the First Amendment Amendment in December, the second one with the general fund in March, and then the final again in June.
Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
As far as the 31 double A funding or supplemental possibly coming, do we have any idea what that would mean dollar-wise?
We don't. It's hopeful. There's a lot of people that are hopeful that that will change. But like I said, I think that we have some other savings out of the audit that we'll be able to continue with all the programming that we had planned.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 9.4 Closed Session. Can I have a recommendation? 9.4.1 Adjourn. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Anderson?
Resolve that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education adjourns to a closed session for the purpose of hearing complaints slash disciplinary action against an employee as requested by the employee and permissible under the Open Meetings Act 15.268, Section 8, Subsection A.
Can I have a second, please? Ms. Jusinski? Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and the motion passes.
Thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session. I can't see the time.
One middle years program coordinator slash teacher for Royal Oak Middle School because Alicia Washington would assumed Angela Mallory's position who assumed the new assistant principal position. And one speech and language pathologist for the elementary level. I think that's it unless I'm missing one, but I believe those are our current vacancies, which I'll list in my report tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson, how are we doing on Latchkey hiring?
Latchkey is about what it was last month, but with the addition of 13 new paraprofessionals, I know Ms. Truesdale will recruit from our, as she often does, from our paraprofessional ranks to assist in Latchkey. So that may, that may help.
Where did we land with enrollment for our DK and kindergarteners for the year?
Yes, I was going to share that with you as well. It was interesting because Jamie from Yo and Yo, I asked Kathy for clarity when she said we were up, our enrollment was up by 54. She was referring to 2024. So I don't know if our enrollment is going to be up, but kindergarten enrollment is currently 375 and last year it was 366. So it's very close. Developmental kindergarten is currently 86 and it was 87 last year. It's shocking that it's like that close. So we're up between kindergarten and DK, eight children from last year, which is almost the same. And then the count date is when we'll know for sure and the count date is the first Wednesday in October and the second count date is the second Wednesday in February. But next month I'll be able to give you a much better idea of whether or not our enrollment is up this year, which I suspect it will be. So I have that, did we approve the personnel changes yet? Okay, there are two other items that are under me, but that I believe are mine perhaps. Item 9.5.2, the superintendent contract amendment and item 9.5.3 executive director contracts for renewal.
We'll do 9.5.2 superintendent contract amendment. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Alexander.
Resolve that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the amendment to the superintendent contract as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Anderson, can we have a roll call, please?
Tracy Van Heidsma?
Yes.
Tracy Cook?
Yes.
Tracy Jocinski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Tracy Alexander?
Yes.
Tracy Chaworski?
Thank you. We have 9.5.3 executive director contracts. Can we have a recommendation, please? Ms. Jocinski?
Resolve that the Royal Oak School Board of Education approves the executive director contracts as presented in the board packet.
Should I list the three positions? Yeah, okay. Joseph Youanas, Executive Director, Curriculum and Instruction. Patrick Walensky, Executive Director, Staff and Student Services. Catherine Nabella, Executive Director, Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Can we have a second, please? Mrs. Alexander, can we have a roll call?
Tracy Cook?
Yes.
Tracy Jocinski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Tracy Chaworski?
Yes.
Tracy Van Heidsma?
Thank you.
Yes, that's all I have this evening.
Item number 10, second public comment, same rules apply as the first. Item number 11, board comments and liaison reports. We have two committee reports. Mrs. Anderson, Arts and Preservation?
I'll just make this very short. We had a rather short meeting, which ended in a power outage. So that was fun. We sat in room E in the dark. Things got very windy and rainy outside. We got to see the well organized archives thanks to Ms. Murphy and I think Jared and and the student, yeah, Sam. And then we talked again about the long fall parental and our plan is to get the informational plaque about that installed this fall. I see we don't have a report about the Oakland 100 on here, but maybe trustee cook could. I just thought maybe trustee cook could fill us in because it's approaching very quickly.
Sure. So as I think we've said before, Oakland Elementary is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. And we've been working diligently on making a celebration for that. It's going to be on September 20th, which I can remember easily because that's my son's birthday. So thank you for having a celebration on his birthday. There's going to be balloons and candy and all sorts of things. It's going to be great. When you go, you'll be able to tour the building. There is going to be some historical information that we'll be talking about Oakland through the, through the decades. I just got to go shop at Doc's Suites today to contribute to our candy bar, which is all different decades of candies. So that's going to be fun. There's going to be a presentation that, that will be happening that people can come to. So it's from six to eight and it's open to the community and alum and students and it's going to be a great time. So please come.
Thank you. Mrs. Alexander, Communications Committee?
Thank you. We met and learned, got to hear a little bit about the archive project that had happened. And some of the work that we're doing around communicating out about the activities as well as recapping some of the community events that have taken place. Talked a little bit about our presence on social media and looking at the impact of that, as well as each of our groups this month was tasked with talking about ensuring that we understand what the goal and focus of our meeting is, as well as make sure that that is consistent with what, what we As well as make sure that that is consistent with what, what we want and with the hopes that we can push the information out to the more general community to get some more community folks involved in our committees. So, thanks.
Mrs. Patrick?
Thank you. I would also like to highlight a few things that we will be doing out of this office for our entire community. In addition to the things that have been mentioned tonight by the board members, on September 25th, we will be hosting a state of the schools address by me to the community. That will be held at Royal Oak Middle School beginning at 6:00 PM. It is open to the public and we will be recording the presentation as we have in the past. And that will be also posted to our website. Following my address, giving an update of the schools will be a program on the civility project, which is a approach to thinking about agreeing to disagree and how even with opposing views we can be civil. And they talk about the four pillars of civility and I think it is a wonderful message as adults that we can share with our children that there are people who have different opinions, but can get along through that. And it also gives us an opportunity to think about being open minded to others' opinions and being respectful of those even if they're not our own. So that presentation will follow the state of the schools address beginning at around 6:30 also at Ram's. And then earlier in that day, I will be over at the senior center here in Royal Oak enjoying soup with the super, which was a huge hit in the past and I will be doing it again. We have student servers from Royal Oak High School who will be helping serve the lunch. We have senior citizens from across the community coming over there. They're always wonderful to talk with and hear about their perspectives on the schools and our children and also ask a lot of really good questions of me. It gives me just another opportunity to brag about our district and inform a part of our community that may not be as involved without children here. So very special events coming up and because of that, I want our parents to know that we'll be offering a few updates out of our communications department with some special highlights because we have so many things going on in the month of September. We did not want to wait until the next edition of the dispatch. So we'll be doing some special messaging out to families with good reminders. And I also want to just recognize Mallory Greenway who's here this evening from our Royal Oak Education Association. She is here representing her group and it's been a pleasure to work with her in the last couple of weeks in her new role here with the team and also to have her here at tonight's meeting. So thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any other board, Mrs. Anderson?
I would be remiss if I didn't wish you a happy birthday and I know you would be, rather be nowhere else than here with us on your birthday, but happy birthday.
Thank you. Mr. Chaworski?
I just want to talk about something that's come up several times in the meeting. I was really excited to see the parents who were here this, earlier in the meeting discussing their concerns with the safety of the schools. And it dawned on me that the two that spoke were brand new parents of the district. So I think everyone needs to know whether you're at the meeting or watching this on television, that all the information in the resolution that Lauren presented tonight is on the district website. And also if you're in need of a gun lock, those are always available at the Royal Oak Police Department and you can just walk in, no questions asked and they will give that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At that point, number 12, adjournment. We'll call ourselves adjourned.